Meeting for May two thousand twenty-five. Want to welcome everybody here, hope you've had a good day. As usual, we'll start this meeting out with the prayer and I'd like to lead the prayer today. If you'll bow with me. Most gracious, loving heavenly Father, we're so thankful for this stage you've given us. We're so thankful for the many blessings you bestow upon us. We ask you to bless this city. We ask you to bless all the residents in our city. We ask you to keep them safe. We ask you to bless those first responders, those who risk their lives sometimes to, to protect us, the police officers, the fire hot firefighters and, and, uh, and others. We just ask you to keep them safe and we're thankful for their dedication to service. We ask you to bless us tonight as we discuss the business of this city. We pray that you give us wisdom as we deliberate and we ask this prayer in Christ's name. Amen. We have a short agenda tonight. And has anything changed on the agenda, Adam?
Uh, no changes. I would like to say, uh, just our next comprehensive plan meeting, we're up to meet number three. We're gonna have a short meeting in June also, so we're gonna do it at the end of the June Planning Commission meeting following it. Um, so I just wanted to kind of put that out there, but no changes is this agenda, so.
Okay, very good. So do I, um, I'm seeking approval for, uh, approving the agenda as written. Ms. Wheeler moves for approval. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. McNeil. No, uh, by Mr. Parnell. All those in favor say aye. Motion passes. Has everybody had a chance to read the minutes of the April meeting? And if so, are there any changes that we need to do to the minutes? Hearing none, do I have a, a motion to approve the minutes as written? So moved by Mr. McNeil, a second please. Second by Ms. Wheeler. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes. We set aside this time, uh, the meeting for, uh, public forum, which allows anybody present to, to come forward and, uh, state your concerns or requests before the board. If you come, I'd ask you to state your name and address. And I also would ask you to keep, uh, your comments to under three minutes. Is there anybody that wishes to address the board tonight? Seeing none, do I have approval to close the public forum? So moved by Mr. Parnell. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. McNeil. All those in favor say aye. Public forum is closed. Item number four. Request final subdivision plat amendment to alter the lot lines and dimensions of three existing lots on Carol Anne Road. Is there anybody here to represent item number four? If you would come and state your name and address.
Bruce Rainey. Uh, my office is at, uh, nine hundred South Broadway in Portland.
Okay. And what's your last name, please?
Rainey.
Okay. Uh, we're gonna let Adam take it from here, then we'll come back to you.
All right, so what we're doing tonight is we're altering three existing lots, so we're not creating any new buildable lots in this neighborhood. Uh, as you can see, the red area outline includes the three lots. There's two on Carol Anne, one of them's, there, two of them of the three have never been built on. Uh, but these are lots from the sixties, so these three lots here. These, like, here's the original subdivision plat, here's Carol Anne, here's Grace. And, you know, these lots here were actually built, they don't have any frontage. I guess it was originally the frontage lot on the back. It's kind of odd the way they're set up. What the proposal is to do, the Carol lot, Carol Anne lots, so, uh, put those together into one larger lot. Leave a fifty-foot road frontage for this lot back here, it's about one point six acres, this back lot. And then a new roughly point nine seven acres, or point nine, I can't remember the exact dimension, point nine five, I think acres on this. Uh, these lots will no longer be landlocked, they'll have road frontage and an easement. Uh, so it's go, like I said, it's going from three lots to three lots. I know we've had issues in the past about people trying to reset about existing properties. Uh, in this case, you know, the, all these properties have been in this area since the sixties they've been created. Uh, this is alteration of three existing lots. We tried to maintain the average of the lots along Carol Anne and Grace, uh, with the lower lot, it's the smallest one at point nine seven acres. These are all zoned R twenty-five, so they're way over the minimum square footage. But that's kind of unique in that, uh, it's three lots, uh, just being altered to three lots. Motion options approved, uh, based on subdivision plat meeting the city's requirements. Be my recommendation to deny the plat if we, we feel the plat does not meet the requirements or three defer to additional information at the June meeting.
Mr. Rainey? Do you have anything to add to what Adam said?
No, sir. Uh, Adam just about covered it. I'd like to add, try to answer any questions that you might have.
We might have some. Any questions from the board for either Adam or Mr. Rainey?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Only one question, I think Adam answered it for me, uh, earlier, but, um, the one lot that's going vertical with the grace, it, it's landlocked anyways, right? And that, that's how it was.
Yes, it was part of the original subdivision plat. You should see that more common. I, I was saying it was the back lot was probably intended to be part of the front. But yeah, these, these three lots here on Grace, they were behind the frontage lots. So fortunately, it's owned by all the same people right now, but if it was owned separately, that would be an issue with it being landlocked. Um, that's one good thing about this plat amendment too. We are creating road frontage and doing away with that, so it could sell independently now, so. Yes, this is, it's a roughly two-acre lot. Being subdivisioned to.
Are there any other questions? Well, I'm looking for, um, a motion or recommendation. Okay, Ms. Wheeler makes a motion to approve item number four. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Cisco, any further discussions on this matter? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Have a good day. David and Karen Y. are aware, request approval to relocate the existing one family detached dwelling unit at six seventeen Carol Anne Road to the vacant two point two-three acre property located at zero Carol Anne on property references Sumner County map one four three G. Is there anybody here representing item number five? If you'll come forward and state your name and address.
I'm David Rye, the landowner. Uh, my wife Karen, and we have our contractor here too, just in case you have questions.
Okay, we'll turn this over to Adam and then we'll come back to you, please.
Sure.
All right, uh, we've done a couple of these in the past. There's a state law provision about moved houses, uh, in a case where there is no homeowner association, which in this case is not on that, those properties, the planning commission basically has to review any request to move an existing house. The whole basis of the state law is they want a house that's moved in to be generally the same as what's there. You know, it can be bigger, of course, it can be more valuable and things like that, newer. Um, it's kind of an odd law in that someone could build a brand-new house, like, meet the minimum requirements and be different than a moved-in house. But this is a very unique request in that this house is fifty-six years old, I think, and it's in this community and they're moving it basically within the community. It's basically, they're wanting to move it five hundred feet. If you remember the last thing, we approved another lot, so they want the existing house here at six seventeen, they're wanting to move it to the back lot. The yellow line shows the area it's moving back. Uh, this house, per Sumner County tax records online, uh, built nineteen sixty-nine, twenty-two hundred twenty-four square feet finished, but based on their definition, I tried to use apples to apples, all these across, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand improvement, just the building value. As I said, it's a five hundred dollar, a five hundred feet relocation. Twelve to sixteen of the homes along Carol Anne, Grace, I kind of did this whole area. Uh, they were built between nineteen sixty-three and nineteen seventy. There were a couple in the later nineties built, kind of throws off the, the average there, but most of the homes in that area, majority of them were built in the sixties, similar to this home here. Uh, the sixteen homes have average square footage finished per the county's website of twenty-two ninety-six. So you can see we're right there, we're within a hundred of that. And the homes' valuations ranged, you know, some of them are across the board, because there's a couple of bigger homes, one's like four hundred thousand, uh, but the average valuation, two hundred and sixty-three, five sixty-four. So the house they're moving in, and the current value's two thirty-seven. My understanding, the improvements they will make to the, the property will, will probably greatly improve that, uh, the valuation due to the, the improvements to the building, more modernizing some of the foundations, rebrick in it. So my opinion, it meets the provision of the state law. This is a home in this existing community, it's been in this community for fifty-something years, the same subdivision. Uh, so it'd be hard to justify that it doesn't match when it's one of the, the ones that was original to it. Uh, motion options, one, we could approve the house moving request based on the proposal meeting the state law section and the reference of the house's existing house in the neighborhood's subdivision. That'd be my recommendation. Two, we could deny the house moving request based on proposal not meeting state laws or section as we determined in the meeting here. Or three, we could defer the request, bring additional ma, information at the June meeting.
Does the board, anybody on the board have questions for Adam? Or, or, uh, is it?
Rye.
Rye.
Yes, sir.
Adam, can you speak to the access to the property?
Let me go back. Yes. You regard it like the future house, although the moving in house? Yes, it will come in a driveway here, this fifty-foot road frontage that was created out of the previous item for this lot. It's actually a fifty-foot easement for this lot, so it'll be a shared driveway through here to access both these lots. They've had to get engineer report on the culvert sizing, I think the thirty-six inch drainage culvert, they'll have to put in across. It's not real stream, but the, the low area back there in the back. So yes, it'll have a shared driveway, it'll come in off Carol Anne.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, uh, I'm looking for a motion, um, for item number five.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the house moving request, uh, based on the proposal meeting the state law section. And the house is an existing house of the neighborhood.
Okay, we have a motion for approval by Mr. Gilmore. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Wheeler. Any further discussions? All those in favor of approval for item number five, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, we get to hear from you again, don't we, Mr. Rainey? Item number six. Request site plan approval for three hundred and eighty-four square foot sales office and display area at eight fifty Louisville Highway. If you'll come to the podium. And, um, we already know your name and address, so, uh, we're just going to, we're just going to like to Adam.
I'm still Bruce Rainey. I'm still from nine hundred South Broadway in Portland, Tennessee.
Did that ever change us, please, let us know.
I will.
Okay, Adam.
All right, this property, uh, is next to the Marathon Gas Station across from the seven eleven development. Unfortunately, the airway doesn't show the seven eleven. Couple of months ago, we were talking about the interchange overlay for exit ninety-eight, and this was on the property we, we talked about, where due to the use, the setup, it'd be hard to meet, so we amended the ordinance to allow additional uses. So what they want to do is a, like a sales office, business office, uh, for their, their sales op, business to do accessory buildings. So they'll have a display area also. So the property is existing, uh, if you'll see it, it's kind of a rough shape now, but it's all paved lot. It's on this little fork side road here, runs parallel to, uh, highway thirty-one. So what we try to do is keep it kind of low-key, keep the existing asphalt much as possible. Uh, they will put their sales office here, put in some landscape, we're talking about doing some landscaping around the front, kind of get rid of those concrete barriers, put a fence around the display area. So they're gonna make some improvements to it. The building, we told them it had to meet our design guidelines for, and we require the office building to be a permanent-type building, so the architect come up with this drawing, it looks like it meets our material requirements, uh, and it's roughly pretty small, small-scale building. So a motion options would be approve the site plan based on the plan meeting the city's requirements, including the permanent sales office to meet our material requirements. Uh, that'd be, they've shown fifty percent brick, and I assume the other fifty percent looks like it's like a hardy board, cement fiber board material. That'd be my recommendation on number one there. Number two, we could deny it if we felt like there's anything, there's needs to correct, they can bring it back to the June meeting. And then three, defer the request, I'm sorry, defer the request to, if any additional information back for the June planning commission.
Mr. Rainey, you have anything to add?
No, sir. Uh, I think this will really improve that, that area right there. Uh, I'm familiar with these people, they have one in Portland, not far from my office, and it's always neat and orderly and I think will be a good addition to go to.
Thank you. We have any questions for the board?
So, Adam, so where, where, where are they gonna store their buildings at?
The display, my understanding would be this area here. Like, this will be their parking office, so you'll come in, might, they'd probably be in this area here. Because the asphalt ends, if I remember right, back here. So generally this area here. They're, they're gonna do a coated chain link fence to kind of secure the area, so.
And then is this a foundation building or is it built like one of the sheds, just on runners or?
I'm sorry.
Is, is the building gonna built on, be built on a foundation?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And we've got a pad there now, but they're gonna put it up on the foundation. I needed them to raise it up about a foot.
Yeah, because we do have a floodplain there, so we'll have to make sure it's one foot above the base flood elevation. That's my understanding, it's, it's a small building, but it, it will be, we told them it had to be a permanent type.
Has, has there been a sewer availability letter issue?
They've not requested that yet, so.
Huh?
They've not requested that yet.
You're not requesting sewer?
No, they've not, they've not requested that yet, they'll have to go through, we haven't permitted anything or anything. They'll have to go through sewer to tag into it, so.
But, but it will have restroom facility?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, one of the things I would like to ask, and I think it's been consistent here with the board lately, for any new buildings coming in to the, to the city, as far as, is there an option to brick a hundred percent of the front of the building?
I can certainly take that to them.
Okay.
Way it's gonna be sitting, uh, you look at the plan.
The long ways here.
Primarily.
So it's, so the front's facing the parking lot, is that what you're saying? So you're gonna see the side of the building?
I can, uh, have them, I can certainly have to brick, you know, that, uh, east side or, or the front in east.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, yeah, I, I would, just myself, I can speak for, for myself only, but what a lot of the citizens have been saying, and they're wanting to see more of a, a finished, uh, higher-end product, I guess I would say. I don't know if that's the right word to use, but more brick than wood and hardy construction. A mixture, I think, would be fine, ninety-ten, but I think that's what we're looking for.
Oh, we can certainly have them do that. Uh, I'm authorized to agree to it, so.
Adam, is there any minimum restriction on the size of the building in this area of our?
Not our commercial.
On the commercial building? So I could build a hundred-square-foot commercial building if I got it approved?
Well, I mean, the board's got to prove it, uh, for new, for new use of property. That's what it is here, this is usually, you know, something that's small, planning commission, and that's had to be involved in, just because it's a new use of a commercial property. But I think it has everything that they need, they got their offices, bathroom, the floor plan.
I got you, I just wondered.
Yeah, we don't have, you know, the residential, some of those base districts, we have minimum square footages, but not the commercial.
And Mr. Rainey? Mr. Rainey, I just, let me just say, thank you so much for bringing this to the board, bringing this to the city along with your customers. It's a, it's a great addition on that exit, and so we appreciate them investing in our city.
And this will be, I meant to tell you, they will own this property, they're not leasing, they're buying the property.
Are there any other questions?
Okay.
Maybe.
Mr. Parnell?
Adam. I'm trying to remember the conversation we had when we were talking about bringing this into a different zoning code and, and what we were trying to add. I remember the original zoning would only allow hotels and restaurants.
Gas station.
And there was, and, okay, and a gas station, and this lot was just too small to serve any of those uses.
That's right.
So what did we, what did we add?
We allowed, this would be under like a retail use. We added, uh, of course, issues, professional services like hair salons, barber shops, uh, they do like a retail. I mean, that's the big, big chain, offices, a bank, things of that nature, so.
Okay, and because this lot is heavily covered in, I, I don't know, is it, is it flood zone or is it floodway?
It's flood zone, the floodway's on the other side of the road. The flood's on roughly a third of the property, I think.
The front third, or front two-thirds?
It's on the drawing there.
Yeah. I mean, it's just gonna be a tough one to do anything more permanent. I think this is, I, I'm just gonna be blunt, I, I don't love this use, because it's just a bunch of, I shouldn't say bad things about storage buildings without the mayor here blessing, but, um, I just don't think that's just a beautiful place for our, you know, right off the interstate, boom, here's a bunch of storage units to look at. Um, at the same time, I don't know what else could be put here, and I don't want to see it vacant forever, so. I do, yes, thank you for the landscaping at the front.
Yeah.
Um, and I really do want to see the building to have some brick on it. Um, so I'm, I'm, I'm on the approve side of this, uh, but I guess I just want to see really good landscaping and I want to see the building to be, um, because honestly, I don't think the storage buildings are gonna be the most beautiful things, but at least if the permanent building is, I think that's positive.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I'm looking for a motion for item number six.
They agreed to that.
Any stipulations you might want to put on the motion?
That'd be it, stipulation.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would approve the site, uh, based on the plan, uh, meeting the, the city's requirements in the, the new zoning. Uh, with some stipulations, I'd like to see, uh, the front be a hundred percent brick, both sides be sixty percent bricked, and you could do hardy board on the back. Is there any windows on the back of the unit?
Yes.
Okay, so like we did down here on, on, uh, South Dickerson, on the back of the, on the back of the structure, we would do brick from the window sill down.
I don't think we're on the whole property, just their building area.
Okay, anything else on your motion?
I don't think you're gonna, nobody's gonna say it, as I did, but.
Anything else on your motion? Mr. Gilmore? Anything else on your motion?
Uh, no, sir, I think the landscape is covered in the plan, but.
Okay. All right, we have a motion, uh, for approval with stipulations that there be a hundred percent brick on the front and sixty percent on the, was it side and rear?
On the sides.
Side.
Just the sides?
And a rear is when the windows slid down.
Okay. Do I have a second? We have a second by Mr. Parnell. I, I would like to add one thing for consideration. I, I agree with, uh, that the building is just too plain. And, and, um, and I like the idea of all brick or at least more accents, especially on the front. Uh, I don't know if all brick would work, but it's just, it's just too plain for me, you know, from visual. But, um, but we'll, we'll, we'll carry, we'll, we'll go on with your motion. I believe, Adam, I believe you have the ability for the, for the plan, don't you? I mean, you have final approval on the design plan?
Now, the exterior.
Without coming back?
The exterior, the planning commission approves. I mean, what we'll do before the permit, we'll make sure that complies with these stipulations.
Okay.
Yeah, the planning commission approves the exterior for all new commercial.
Well, I guess my point is, is we, we see people bring all the time these drawings up here, and that's never usually the end product, which usually, and to be quite honest, looks better most of the time than what was presented on the three-D model.
Mm-hmm.
And I was under the understanding that under our rules and regs, you had the ability to had some discretion, I guess you would say, in design build.
Yeah, I mean, we all, I always try to present what they're, at the, the planning commission to see. Um, you know, you were usually asked for ways to break up walls and things and materials, but this building's so small. Yeah, I saw what Scott's saying, he, the accents on it. Um, but we did ask them to do the fifty percent brick and.
Right, but I guess that's a request, not part of the stipulations. If they're not a little more specified, I think, you know, it's a little difficult to have more accent.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Yes, sir.
One thing that might add to the facade of the building, it's such a small building. I'm thinking, and would be, everything's concrete around there, everything's asphalt. But I think if I had them put some planters in, in front of the building, uh, in fact, uh, uh, between the sidewalk and the building, stand up about two, two and a half feet tall with, uh, either, well, some kind of annuals or, uh, or something like that, maybe even holly is an annuals mix. I could really break that building up and provide what y'all want to see.
Yeah, basically, this area, and the sidewalk's really because we gotta have a ramp getting up to it, because we gotta elevate for the floodplain, but it'd be along the front there.
I think that's a great idea, Bruce. The reality is, I don't want to see this building mimic the look of the storage barns. I want it to be clearly a different look than the storage barns. So I think the storage barns are not gonna have landscaping around them. I would like this to have landscaping around it. So even though there's landscaping around the, the, the front, and I think that's nice, I think this building needs to look more permanent, and a permanent building has landscaping around it. So I like your idea of planters, um, or something. And I don't want to, I don't want to personally specify exactly what, I don't, I don't know. I just, I, I, and I don't know what percentage brick it should be, I don't know any of that. I just know that I don't want it to look like a storage barn. I want it to look like a permanent building, which does have brick and does have landscaping.
And it's got railing, it'll have railing on the front, I mean, it's got a lot of things that make it more.
So do you understand what he was saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and that's something that you could look at when the final plans come in?
Yeah, we just, when we go do the permit, we'll make sure the materials are up and some kind of. Yeah, we just, when we go do the permit, we'll make sure the materials are up and some kind of landscaping feature.
Okay. So we have a motion with stipulations on brick and a suggestion on planters and landscaping around the building. Does that need to be in the motion or is that just a suggestion?
I would just say we need to make sure it's part of the motion, yeah. Yeah. I mean, it'd be part, increase the stipulation for what the original motion was.
Do, do we need to restate the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Could you please restate your motion?
So all, all sixty and below the window sill?
Yeah.
Is what we've got as stipulations now.
All right, and how, how do we need to add to stipulations as far as the landscaping? Just in addition to?
Foundation blending, Joe.
Okay.
For approval?
For staff approval?
All brick.
Below the window sill?
I just pointing out to Mr. Freeman, at the back of the building, it's really going to be the first thing that everybody sees when they get off the interstate because it's going to be backed up to that ramp. So I, I think he answered my question because he apparently was listening more than I was.
And on the back, we said window sills down? Or I said window sills down?
I think Ken's referring to this wall here.
Yeah, the back, back wall, so there is no windows on the back.
Yeah, that one, I understand, be sixty percent, sixty percent. Whichever one is the front, be a hundred percent, and then the back could be the window sills.
You know, something that would also dress the building up, I'm just sitting here looking at it, thinking about it, on all four sides, if I had the clump, uh, have a different, uh, almost like columns on each corner of the building, of a different accent color, uh, that would match the accent, the color of the windows, the window frames, have that accent and brick on all four corners of the building. I think would really set it out and, and make it stand out together with the s- sopping and, with the sopping, the windows and the, uh, corner coins, if you will, all the same color.
One, I, I agree with that. Now, one thing we need to consider, if you're looking at this, is, I don't know how long that building is, but it's not very long. Four square foot. So it's not like it's a.
It's a whole thing?
It's not like it's a hundred foot long.
Yeah, I, I guess, let me voice my concern.
Thirty three feet.
This is where I'm coming from, is that, like Mr. Ellis said, this is going to be the first business that you see coming off interstate. We're trying to bring our standards up. That exit has come to life tremendously in the past four to eight years. So we want to make something that looks nice for when visitors and everybody's driving by and gets off interstate. So if I'm overkill, I don't, I don't mind changing it one bit. Yes, ma'am?
I won't be able to vote for it. Well, yes, we have been working on straightening things up, but I don't think we've done that yet. And for this small building, it's going to be so much more attractive than what is there now. But our fifty percent rule is okay as far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
That, that brick with hardy board above it or something that's long lasting and, and looks, looks really nice and dressed up suits me fine. The, as far as having all brick in the front and sixty percent everywhere on the ends and then that on the side, to me is too much with where we are right now. My opinion. That's all that is.
Your opinion counts.
Very much so.
I think we're all in agreement, we want something nice. And I think we're all in agreement, there needs to be brick. And I like the idea of planters and planting. And I like the idea of the columns. And I don't know if we need some plants on the backside of this building to, um, um, you know, since, you know, to, to break up that.
That wall?
That wall and make it more attractive to people when they see it. You know, that didn't seem to be too much of an inconvenience to put on somebody. Or do you agree or disagree with that or?
Oh, we can certainly add something.
Yeah.
Not sure what, what we're going to end up seeing because of the back lot, it's so.
Right.
Such a shape. But we can certainly, and I've got, I don't remember if I have a paralline all the way down that land or not. Uh, that was one restriction I had, but we can add, uh, a couple of, uh, I'm thinking add a couple of dogwoods or, or maybe even arborines or something like that on that, the back of the building.
What is the length of the backside of the building?
On the backside.
On, what is the length? How many feet?
Thirty two feet.
Thirty two feet?
Yes.
Okay.
So Mr. So Mr. Chairman, I make the most to approve. We'll keep it how it is, fifty percent brick all the way around. And we'll landscape all the way around the building and also landscape that fence row behind the building.
All right, we have a motion with stipulations. Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any other questions or concerns or suggestions? All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? We thank you. We spent almost as much time on this as we did a $600,000 house two months ago, so just.
Wondering how that happened.
So, uh, so thank you very much for your patience.
Thank you.
I forgot to tell you, Mr. Barnfield couldn't be here, but he wanted y'all to, his comments, I thought I could bring it, let y'all see them, so.
Okay. We are now ready for item number seven, which is the Monticello Town Homes. Request a three-year final master plan approval extension for twenty-eight townhouse units on fifteen thirty-seven Monticello Avenue. Anyone here? There you are. And, uh, your name, please? Your name, please?
Jack Nixon, Springfield, Tennessee.
Okay. Welcome, Mr. Nixon. And we'll turn this over to Adam right now and then come back to you.
All right, notice on my staff report, I got it wrong date. The preliminary master plan for this project and rezoning were approved in August two thousand twenty-two instead of twenty-five. And then the planning commission approved the final master plan November of two thousand twenty-two. So right now, the current vested rights as defined by state law will be valid until August twenty twenty-five. State law did this several years ago, amended the, the law on vested rights. It's a three and two and up to fifteen year kind of plan. You get your preliminary plan, you've got three years to get your final. And if you get your final, you get two more years. So as they drop right on top of each other, it's still five years. So like in this case. But there's a caveat to that. You can get there after five years, but you've got to have it permitted underway. Unfortunately, nothing was ever permitted here. Mr. Nixon was talking about, he got some bids and his more, he wanted to do is he didn't want to go forward with the permitting at this point. It was approved by the planning commission and city commission. The agenda actually says three years. I don't know how I got that mixed up, but, uh, so the request would be to extend it, uh, the three years. To basically extend the original approval. We did, we did our stormwater ordinance in October of two thousand twenty-three. So if we do extend it, the stipulation will have to be revised to, that they'll have to review that to our current calculations of our stormwater ordinance. It's really more about how the calculations are. It's not like it's, you know, all of a sudden we're doing something totally different is. So we would have to make that note. There are six stipulations now. Number one will be revised based on that, based on the city's current stormwater ordinance when they come in to actually get their land disturbance permit. So options would be, approve the requested projected time extension for actually three years instead of two. That would be until August twenty eighteen with the six approval stipulations, including the revised stipulation number one. Uh, since this is fairly recent, means they're saying, got, uh, design guidelines, things definitely recommend that. Number two would be, this board can deny that. Requested project final master plan based on the planning commission discussion determination at the meeting. Or three to further requests the applicant to provide additional information at the meeting. They could go forward right now and get land disturbance permits in place before August and the plan would be extended by law until August twenty twenty-seven currently. There was a note, I think some of the planning commissioners were confused. There was a note in there about, uh, at the bottom about the density. Right now, tonight, they're not requesting increased density. You know, we're under a moratorium, all we can review is what we've already, this is an extension of our original approval. But that was a note. I had a planning commissioner ask me if they were requesting rezoning, didn't feel like that was something we could do. So no, tonight is extending that approval, uh, the original approval the planning commission gave them, so.
You have anything to add to that, Mr. Nixon?
No, sir, I think you covered it all.
Okay. Questions from the board? I, I do have a question. Say we approve this in, uh, to, uh, till August of twenty-seven, right?
The original, I'm sorry, it would be twenty-eight.
If we did approve it until August of twenty-seven, even the, and they came up with a permit in July of twenty-seven, they get another two years?
Mm-hmm, that's true.
So that'd be, that'd be extended to August.
They would get, I'm sorry, let's say, but three years. The state law on the final plan moves in two-year phases. So, well, their request tonight, that's why I got it mixed up with two and three years. I mean, I think we can do either way, but, um, yes, they would have, if they get the permits, then they got ten years to build it. That's actually under construction, yeah. The state law, it's, it's very odd, the vested rights, like I said, it's a three, two, ten to fifteen process. You've got three years to get your preliminary. And once you get your preliminary, you've got three years to get your final. Once you get your final, it's extended to two years. That don't necessarily mean the final's two years later. I mean, if they're within two months of each other, that's five years from that original date. Then, once you're permitted under construction, you have up to ten years. Now, of course, this would probably move a lot quicker than that. This is, that's for bigger projects that take a long time, phased developments, you know, go up to fifteen. But yeah, they would have, if he gets the permit and our, our time we give him, then he can continue on.
So right now, they can build this under today's standards and guidelines, is that correct?
If, if they come in to get the permit, land disturbance permit about before August, yes, they would, it would, they can continue on.
If we give them the two-year extension or, or to twenty twenty-seven, uh, they would still be under today's guidelines. If we changed our standards, which we seem to do a lot, you know, they would, they would, they would still be under today's guidelines for many, many years.
And that's why the vested rights were, that's correct, yeah.
I, I, I think I understand the benefit to Mr. Nixon on, you know, getting this extension because, you know, prices are high, can't, you know, all those things. What benefit is it to the city to give him this extension?
I mean, I think it's your honoring your approval. You're given a short period of time. I mean, the city went through this and determined, we felt like it was a good use of the property. Of course, I know things can change, but I mean, that's, a lot of the vested rights about honoring what we've approved.
Okay.
I mean, obviously, we feel like this was the best use of the property.
But we approved that for three to five years. And now we're, now we're going to be approving it for another three to five years. Okay, all right.
But that's how, I mean, I guess that's how you look at, uh, even if the plan isn't extended, the zoning's in place because we rezoned the property, identity, so. So the city would have to go back and change the zoning to remove their ability to build the number of units, subunits and acres, what it was approved for.
All right, any questions or comments? Mr. Parnell?
Okay, so I know the request isn't for additional density at this time, but we've all read the email. So my concern is, and I, I guess, let me just ask you point blank. Do you or someone connected to you plan to build this? Or is this just trying to, to get an extension so you can get it sold to somebody else who might build it?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Okay. Do you plan to build this as designed yourself or with, with a company that you're connected to? Or are you guys just trying to find a buyer that might do it later?
The plan is to build it as designed. And, and, uh, if, you know, right now, it's not working out. On the bids I've got, on the amount of density that's there, it's, it's not working out. To, uh, when you divide it by twenty-eight, you got all your, all your costs, it, it really is not coming out with any profit at the end. So, I mean, I could build it, but I, I can't see how to build it with a profit.
Fair enough. Is the expectation within the next two to three years that things are going to change?
You know, I'm only there. If I can't find anything, I'll just, you know, we'll just have to, I'll just have to give up on all the money I spent on the engineering work and, and give it up. But right now, I, I can't make the numbers work.
Okay.
So what it is, is everybody bidding on that or, or used to bidding on pro, uh, projects that's got more density. So that the, the price they're charging, I, I just, I, I just can't make it work out right now. And, and I've had numerous bids. I'm hoping, I'm hoping it changes, but I, I, like you, I don't know if it will.
Any other questions or comments?
Adam, at this time, you just suggest we go ahead and do it for three years?
Yes.
Extend for three years?
Many things, like you said, if, you know, he decides and it doesn't happen, uh, the zoning's in some place, the city would have to change the zoning.
Yeah, I mean, the reality is if he, if he can't find somebody that can do this project and create a profit for him, but he can sell it to somebody that can build this project at a profit because there's, some people can just do things. I would have no problem with that. I don't mind seeing this project get built. I think it's the right, I think it's the right use for this land. I think a higher density is a non-starter. Today, tomorrow, next year, ten years from now, I think a higher density there is a non-starter. So it either works or it doesn't. I'm hopeful that at some point it does work. And if that's sometime within the next three years, that's, I guess that's, that would be a win for all of us. So I, I'm okay to move forward with it. I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the request for a three-year extension.
Uh, we have a motion for approval to grant a three-year extension on item number seven. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Wheeler. Are there any comments before we go to the vote? Here are none. We have approval and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry, was there, was there anybody wanting to say no on that? By any, okay. Is you, okay, I didn't. I should have asked that and I didn't. Okay. Well, this is a near-record meeting. We can dismiss or we can hang around to eight-thirty, whatever y'all want to do. Are there any other questions or concerns or topics you want to bring up before we dismiss?